Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the four selectmen meeting, regularly meeting the agenda for Monday, August 6, 2018, and it's approximately 7:15. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Announcements, district-wide town meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, I'm sorry, August 8th at the Blackstone-Milville Regional High School, and that commences at 7:00 PM.
Is this on our agenda for later? I don't think so.
Could we pause on this topic to have the Chair of the School Committee come up, because they met this afternoon, and I think she'll have some important information to share? Is it later on the agenda?
I have the Town Clerk going to come and do an update on the district-wide meeting that she did attend, and maybe both of you can come.
Okay.
You know, that will be good.
Perfect, it's after minutes.
Okay. Thank you. The Board has minutes to sign this evening for July 9th, 2018, May 21st, 2018, and an executive session of May 2nd, 2018. I'll hear motions to accept the minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from May...
July 3rd.
July 9th, May 2nd, and May 21st, as written.
Are there any comments?
I was not at the July 9th meeting, so if we could make a motion to accept the July 9th and 21st separately, and May 21st separately.
I think we'll need to do them all separately, because there's one that Mr. Albert Woodson --
Okay.
Not present on the list.
I make the motion to accept the minutes as written for July 9th.
Aye.
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 Abstain.
Aye. More extension.
I make a motion to accept the minutes as written for May 21st, 2018.
Second.
Aye.
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 I make a motion to accept the minutes as written for executive session, May 2nd, 2018, as written.
Second.
Aye.
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 Abstain.
Town Clerk, update on the district-wide meeting and clerk fees.
Okay, so...
She's so used to being up in front of town meetings, she was gonna go behind.
Okay, so Jane and I were both at the meeting today at the high school. I think that one of the interesting points is that there's no air conditioning in there, and it was roastey-toasty. Should be lots of fun. We've decided that it was suggested that there won't be any spectators or non-voters allowed in the auditorium. They will be asked to go to the cafeteria.
With the exception of the Town Administrator and the Accountants.
Yes.
The Accountants from each town, and the Town Administrators, and the Superintendent.
And the Superintendent will be there. Otherwise, everybody that is a non-voter from either town would be asked to go to the cafeteria, and Jane was going to take care of any of the ballots that were going to be used. She's going to take care of all that, have them ready, and...
The doors will open at 6:00, so people can get there early. We will fill the auditorium first, but if people do come with children, there is babysitting available in the gym, but if they want to sit with their children, they will need to sit in the cafeteria, because only registered voters, with those few exceptions, will be in the auditorium.
And check in for registered voters as you walk through the doors. Milville's going to be on the left, and we go by street address. Blackstone's going to be on the right, and they go by last name. So we'll have signage up saying which tables are going to be, like, A through H for streets, and so on and so forth. For the Milville residents, will be on the left.
And we will have water available for people, but I encourage you to bring lots of ice, or whatever. It will be warm. I mean, we were very warm for just a 20-minute meeting, and it will be warm with lots of bodies in there. So... I think I would make a suggestion that maybe they will have, you know, an EMS person on standby, because with this heat and humidity, there have been, you know, numerous increases and calls. Yeah, we're making those arrangements.
Great. Fire in place. And also, I think an important piece is the ballot vote.
Everything will be by ballot, whether we're voting on an amendment, or voting on an actual motion, or an article, it will all be by a ballot vote.
And we'll be ready for that.
And all counted by the two clerks and whoever they have.
And our counters.
Yeah. And I would encourage, you know, it's, if you're a registered voter, this is part of the process, and I would encourage anyone to attend who's registered to vote.
They did say to get there early?
Get there early.
Because the meeting will start no later than 7:30.
Yeah.
But we really encourage everybody to get there, by 6:30 at least, to get in and get a seat.
And we will, we will open the School Committee meeting immediately at 7:00, but we won't start this process until the majority are in, but we won't keep that going forever. We did say 7:30, we would start.
And Blackstone was expecting an influx of inactive voters, but...
Wasn't that funny? That was funny.
It was, but I think we've kind of, probably between the votes that we've had recently, we've addressed probably the majority of our inactive voters.
Yes.
Yeah.
But we'll be prepared also with the paperwork that needs to be done if we have inactive voters coming in.
Yes, but nobody can register to vote at this time. They have missed that deadline.
Yes, that was last week.
So the meeting will not open any later than 7:30, but people can come in and vote, obviously, up until the time the vote's about to take place, save the vote. Yeah, I mean, somebody could, somebody who's still in line, or come in late, or whatever, can certainly come, and there'll be people there to check them in, and if the process is still going, they can certainly participate.
And there's an overflow room?
There's an overflow room in the cafeteria, but if they want to speak, they'll have a way to identify, it'll, it will be...
They'll identify, be identified as a registered voter, because we're...
They'll have to come into the auditorium to speak, but there'll be somebody who will let us know that somebody's coming, and we'll wait.
And Jesse and his assistant, Tim, will be, will have audio and video in the overflow room.
In the overflow room, and it will be live on Facebook, and it will be live Blackstone.
Anything else?
And of course, recorded.
That's all I had in my knowledges. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Fees.
All right, see you all on Wednesday.
Fees.
Thank you.
So, I've, this is the Town Clerk's fee schedule that I have requested to be updated a little. It hasn't been changed in a long time, so my thoughts were for birth, death, and marriage certificates, that we go from $5 up to $10. Area towns charge actually a lot more than that, but I don't want to raise it too much, but I figured $5 to $10 for birth, death, and marriage certificates. Certified copies of any documents, also $10. Copies per page used to be 50 cents per page, but per state law, it's now 5 cents per page. A correction of a birth or death certificate, that takes quite a bit of time. I requested that it go up to $15 from $10. A yard sale permit, I just wanted to clarify that yard sale permits are $5 per day of the yard sale, so if you're having a yard sale on a Saturday and a Sunday, it would be $5 per day. That's what I'm recommending, and, because it was never really clarified, so I wanted to clarify that. And then the zoning bylaws are free to the public on the website, but we still have people coming in and requesting them. We were charging $2.50, but I think if we have to go on the website and actually find them and print them, $5 is a good price for that, especially since people can get them for free on the website. And zoning maps, we don't very often get a request for them, but it was $1. I recommend going up to $2 for the zoning maps, because they're big, takes a lot to photocopy those.
I'll hear a motion to accept that the fee schedule is presented.
So moved.
Discussion.
Just one second, second, I'll second it.
Discussion.
How much lower are these compared to other towns? Like, are you cutting yourself short?
No, no, I don't think so. Again, you know, I mean, I'm doubling the price, and I, I know that other towns are charging $20, $25 for a birth certificate or a death certificate, but in my opinion, you know, if you have something like that happening in your life, you don't want to have to pay too much, you know? You know, you have a new baby, and you've got an awful lot of expenses already, so I didn't want to raise it too much, but I just think that $10 is a reasonable amount.
Thank you, Diane.
You're welcome.
That's it?
Yep, I am.
Rule.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I just, while Clerk is here, I just wanted to bring attention that on, you know, Friday, once again, she was trying to get out as much information about the upcoming town meeting, state primary, federal elections, and a few other things, and I know a lot of people received this mailer, and I want to say thank you again to her, too, actually trying to do this as a one-person show in reduced capacity, so thank you, because I know we've already gotten feedback that people have, you know, been able to answer questions about the town meeting that's coming up, and some other things, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Thank you. Board of Assessors.
Mr. Chairman, in the actual agenda, you'll see that in our previous meeting, we spoke about the possibility that Andrea Pettit, who had been put on the Board of Assessors during the annual review of appointments, was really interested in being on the Finance Committee, and she cannot serve on both of those committees. So the last time, we didn't know that the moderator had yet appointed, so we tabled it, but she has been appointed, so therefore she would have that official, and she had officially resigned from the position. But knowing that we're going into the fall, and even though we have two members on the Board of Assessors, Marilyn had served as our third assessor as a certified person, and she is willing to do that as we recruit, once again, a replacement, you know, permanently. Well, nothing's permanent, but you know what I'm saying, long-term.
So Marilyn's interim?
Yes, yes, and she has been contacted, and she's fine with that.
Okay, we'll take two votes on this notice of resignation, or accept the resignation of Andrea Pettit.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Andrea Pettit. A second.
Rule.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Then I make the motion to appoint Marilyn Matthew to the Board of Assessors through June 30th, 2019.
Any discussion? No discussion?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Notice of the appointment of Andrea, Andrea Pettit, Gary Gill, and Ken Tubman. I'll hear a motion to support the appointments to the Finance Committee.
So moved. Second.
Rule.
Aye.
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 Aye. I want to thank all the individuals that stepped up and willing to serve on the Finance Committee.
And Marilyn for stepping in again.
Public Forum, Citizens Committee, there's a three-minute moment on it. We have a construction report, that project is just in its end stage of completion, and there's some punch list items to attend to, but the program has proceeded very well, and we're proud owner of the solar system.
What's good is that it is going along to timetable, and they did expect that, as they do what they call a witness test and service test, that the final completion will be on target for September, which means then we should be getting some of the benefits of the net metering credits, which is what we're in for for 30, 20 years, excuse me. Could have done it from the MMA, but we did 20 years, which will come right off our electric bill.
And we have correspondents from the Massachusetts Municipal Association, and a bill for more selectmen dues and activities. That total amount is $529. I would entertain a motion to approve the annual assessment of $529.
Make a motion to accept the MMA dues of $529 for the fiscal year 2019.
Any discussion? Rule.
I second it.
Oh, you second it.
Aye.
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 National Grid, new business. I'm sorry, before we get to that point, we have for the 1/12 budget, an assessment for the Blackstone-Milville Regional School District, a mountain due of $504,548.17.
Mr. Chairman, I did receive today in the mail a revised assessment. It's off by a penny, so that, just wanted you to know, that's, it's not in your packet, but I'll be making you a copy, so instead of 17 cents, it's 16 cents.
Every penny counts.
We need a vote to accept.
No, no, it's just they're, yeah, informing our treasurer, and that's what the payments would be until such time, that, depending on the outcome of the actual district-wide meeting.
New business, National Grid lighting, Ms. Moran.
Mr. Chairman, I've asked Robert Moran, who I've been in frequent touch with, with regards to looking at the capping of our streetlights, and I know in particular, one of our members here on the Board, welcome, Robert, Erica Blake, had asked for us to post the listing of streetlights that would have been capped, and we had had some generalized discussion, the whole Board and some people on the outside, about people's ability to actually get in contact with National Grid, about securing a light that may be capped, but wanting to have the lights, streetlight turned on. So I asked Mr. Moran to come, because there are some nuances to that. It's not so simple of if we have a streetlight that is, you know, in the municipal way, it's not a matter that they can actually pay for that light to be turned on. So I thought it would be good to have him come and discuss a little bit about that, and a little bit about the tariff structure that's changed recently, with regards to the expense related to people wanting to set up a streetlight of some sort, or a light somewhere on their property, or near their property.
Thank you, members of the Board, and the public as well. So my name is Bob Moran. I'm the manager of the relationship with a number of towns in the area, including Linden, and the other towns, and I was contacted by Jen to review the streetlights, and I know, I know it was a bit of a struggle to arrive at, you know, the reductions that you all did, and as we went back and forth discussing it, it was clear to me that there are some elements of the tariff and the issue that might be difficult for Jen to explain, or it might be better for someone from National Grid to at least respond to the questions. So I'm really here to facilitate any discussion, any questions that you do have. I know, as Jen mentioned, one of the, one of the possibilities that was discussed was when a streetlight is turned off, that a resident could just call in and get it turned on, and that, that's not the case. You know, tariff does not allow for that. If there's any light that goes onto a public roadway, it has to be a, you know, municipality or another government authority, that would be the only one authorized to, to pay for that light. So we also talked about renting a floodlight, we call it an area light, and that's a possibility if there's, you know, if it's in an area with wood poles, and the infrastructure exists to serve them, but the only size light that's available to rent is like a 250-watt or a 400-watt lamp, so you might be taking out a 50 or 70-watt streetway, roadway light, and turn a floodlight around on the backside of the pole, and you have, you know, eight or 10 times the amount of light, and five or six times the amount of cost. So, you know, a light that, a light that was being built to the town for, you know, for $70 a year, might end up costing a resident, if they were to, if they were to put a light, a floodlight on the back of it, it could be, you know, $400 or $500 a year. So I don't know if that's going to work, but that, that is an option, maybe for some cases. In general, that area lighting is mostly for parking areas, security lighting, and that kind of stuff.
How is that billed? Does it go through a meter, or is it just by hours?
No, all, all streetlights are unmeted, and so the bill is calculated based on the size of the light times the number of hours that it's expected to operate, so it's just a monthly calculation.
There any questions from?
When did, when did that change? Because I know, I know there are individuals who pay for a small streetlight.
I don't know the answer to that, but I know it was some time ago. I would, I would, can research it and get back to the Board, but I think it's more than 10 years ago that it was changed, because I recall similar situation in tight budget years, a long time ago, when towns were doing the same thing, and many residents were saying, "I'll, I'll pay for the light," and tariff at that time did allow it, but it became problematic. You know, if somebody doesn't pay the bill, and we're shutting the light off, then you have a public roadway where the, you know, the public safety is endangered by an individual's unwillingness to pay for the light going forward.
With your liability, or the town?
Yeah.
So they can't have the streetlight turned within to their yard?
No.
It's not an option?
No. The roadway lighting is only available to municipalities and government. Yeah, and the tariff is, I mean, it's kind of our menu. You know, we're a regulated entity, and if it's on the tariff, you know, it's on the menu. I mean, we can do it. If it's not, or we're prohibited from it, we just can't do it.
Okay. There's one more thing, too. I think Bob has been working with our Highway Surveyor and myself, and having identified the streetlights, and that process has already been well underway. It required specific, special orders for different types of lights to be able to organize the crews to come out, but I do know that that has been ongoing, and, you know, people, some people are noticing that, because, you know, they're used to having more light on the streets that they had, but I do want to say thank you to Bob, because it was, you know, an undertaking for us to try to identify in the Highway Survey. I think we've been on the phone with you a number of times, making sure, and I will say National Grid wanted to make sure that those particular ones that we had identified were the ones that, in fact, we were going to do, and kind of talk about, you know, where we believed it would be necessary to maintain for public safety and the like. So I want to say thank you to National Grid, and to you in particular, for working closely with us.
If residents have questions, could you provide contact number?
Yeah, I mean, you can, I'll give, Jen has my number. I'm happy to route that call, but in general, one of the principles in the tariff is that the municipality is, you know, solely responsible for the selection of where the light goes, so I would definitely not even comment on, you know, whether a light belongs here, or whatever.
And we've already gone through that part, and we've, you know, sat with our chief, we've sat with the Highway Surveyor, so we feel, you know, comfortable with the ones that we've chosen. The amounts for savings may actually, in fact, be a little higher, because we witnessed one or two lights that were not operating correctly to begin with, and/or had been, you know, removed, but through the years, you know, had somehow gotten lost track. So Bob has been very diligent in making sure that the list is accurate, so I appreciate that. So I think in the end, the number that we had expressed will actually be a little bit higher, because of the types of lights, and where they, they were removed from, I mean, capped off from.
And the one other item that Jen had asked me to look at was the possibility of converting the streetlights.
Yes, that's right.
From, you know, the traditional light that's out there now is what we call high pressure sodium. It's kind of a yellow light, and many communities are converting the high pressure sodium lights to LED. You know, and the savings are pretty significant, especially as you get into the larger lights. Well, you don't have a lot of the larger lights, you have a lot of 50-watt sodians, and the savings, I mean, it's, it's there, but it's, you know, it's only like $7 or $10 a year for a fixture, so it's not going to drive a real payback decision, it's certainly not going to help you to achieve the savings that you were looking for.
But we had talked about this about two years ago, and Bob's predecessor, who I had reached out to when I first came on board.
The last one.
Yes, yes, Mr. Russell, Russell, right? And it, and back then, it was much more onerous task for municipalities to think about converting. You actually had to buy the light fixture, and then the light bulb, or whatever it is that goes inside, and then you became really the wholly owned person and responsible, so you needed lift trucks, you needed all of that. That has changed in two years' time.
That's right, that is the big part of the tariff that has changed, not to interrupt you, Jen.
No, please, thank you.
But the tariff has changed where now the utility company can offer LED lights, and one town that's going through the exact conversion is Milford, so that's close, and they're changing about 1,700 lights, or about 1,000 lights into that project. So, I mean, that, it's an option we could look at, it will generate some savings, but...
We have to get on a long list, because it's, it's really up to the discretion of National Grid as they roll out and recognize manpower, although I think, I think Bob understands that, you know, we would certainly enjoy any amount of deference that could be shown to the town to try to get that moving in the future, but it's on our radar, and I'll work with him to try to maybe come up with a timeline where that could happen.
Milville's a green community.
Yeah.
And we install LED lighting at the elementary school.
And we have it here, I think, too.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, that's good, that's the way every, all these lighting projects are going, is great savings, it's good that you're participating in it, and if you were to do a conversion, you could actually qualify for some incentives, too, which would help the payback, too. So we'll keep talking about that, and I'll stay, I'll stay for the meeting, and if there's any questions that come up.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Why don't you hold your question?
I just want to ask on the record, if, so all of the lights in town, can you just clarify, do they all fall under this tariff, or are there any that are exempt from the tariff?
All the lights where folks are running from National Grid do, I mean, there may be private lights on, you know, on a school, for example, or on a business, but any of the lights that are unmeted, that are attached to any of the infrastructure that we own, they are billed under the filed retail tariff.
So the ones that we've turned off, that the town owns, are all under the tariff?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, we've been paying for them. So he has a list and all of those have been maintained by the public entity. So administratively, we went through each particular one that's designated with a poll number and a long history of the town paying for it. So it would be all municipal. I'm not touching anybody's light on their own personal property. I don't need to do that. Neither do you.
Well, thank you for having me.
Okay. Appreciate it. I'll stay.
Sure.
Any further questions?
Item B, new business is medical marijuana cultivation. Is Lisa here?
Yes, please come forward. Mr. Chairman, we've had, you know, interest expressed to our town before we actually passed our marijuana bylaw to allow both retail and cultivation aspects. And I know that this board has entertained interest from another local company that's interested in both retail and cultivation. And I know that Ms. Kayden has approached the planning board last year or even almost a year before.
2016.
Yeah, so it was two years ago, before we even actually got to this point where the town, I mean, the state referendum has gone through and now we initially had a moratorium and the town actually successfully voted in on April 30th. Ms. Kayden has asked to come before the board and speak about her business. And I will let you do that.
Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you for having us.
My name's Lisa Kayden. This is my business partner, Cassie Henholdt. And I'm actually going to let her take over the presentation. But I do want to pass out these, kind of a, just a little bit of a deck and overview of who we are and what our intentions are with the town. Thank you.
So since 2016, when we met with the planning board, we kind of changed, and this might sound a little familiar to you because I know you sat in the planning board meeting. But since 2016, we decided to kind of pump the brakes on a Massachusetts project and focus on our home state of Rhode Island. And Lisa and I own the only female-owned and operated cultivation center currently in the state of Rhode Island. And we operate a business in Massachusetts, sorry, in Providence. And we wholesale to two of the three compassion centers that are in the state of Rhode Island. We just signed on for our second year. So we celebrated our first anniversary July 11th and signed up for another year. We work really well with our state, the police department, the fire department, just the local municipality. And we think that we can bring our business to Millville and support the community here. Our objective is to have a letter of non-opposition from you guys so that we can submit an application. We, the way that the process used to work was that you could submit an application and then search for a town. At no point were we ever comfortable with doing that because it was a different set of fees than it is right now. But still, it's a substantial, substantial fee schedule and we are completely self-funded. Lisa and I are in the office every single day. We have a small group that works with us. And, you know, we can't, you know, go out and start a project without knowing that we have a home and a community that would support us.
It also means that we're not a big, large company where anybody that sets foot in our building, they're going to run across one of the honors. So...
Whether they like it or not.
Whether they like it or not.
We do have a landlord here in Millville that is willing to either rent the property to us or potentially allow us to purchase the property, depending on how we kind of structure things. It's located on Lincoln Street, 141. We attached some pictures so that I figure everybody's probably familiar with it.
Roger Grandin's old place.
So if you drive by, which a lot of you probably do, you see that the mini storage containers. We would occupy the space and Art would actually move that business somewhere else. Right now, there is someone that occupies the house. He actually works for us in Providence, so that's how we found the property. But we kind of had this thought that we would be able to have our offices in the house and then we would have our cultivation in the back and we would like to be able to manufacture. So potentially, if the town would approve, we would want to put a third building on the property and build substantially larger. It's 1,800 square feet is the steel structure in the back right now. And we would potentially want to put about 3,000 square feet for manufacturing and storage.
And then eventually down the road, increase the footprint of the cultivation facility. So it's, because we're self-funded, we do things as we can afford them.
Yeah, we like to grow into it. We don't want to have, you know, a 10,000 square foot building that we only use 3,000 square feet of. A lot of cultivators in the state of Rhode Island, you know, they thought it was going to be crazy. They have 20,000 square feet and they're growing in 3,000 square feet. Our license in the state of Rhode Island is a micro size and we have less than 2,500 square feet of cultivation space. So we're comfortable with moving into 1,800 square feet and knowing that we would be able to do it. So it is a tier one cultivation license that we'd be looking for and with a manufacturing license piggybacked onto that. And then depending on, and we had absolutely no idea how you guys feel about it, seeing this is the first time we've met, we didn't know how you felt about retail. Because we would be able to, if you guys would allow it, kind of retrofit the basement. It's on the house. We, it's three...
The old garage part?
Yeah, so the, because it would be handicap accessible, we'd be able to kind of take a garage bay out and put doors and things like that. So we'd be able to use that entire garage space as a retail center if it was something that you guys were interested in.
And that's something you can grow into as a potential.
Right, like, so we're not asking for an approval for everything, you know, without baby stepping. So we're potentially looking for the cultivation and then the manufacturing and then a retail. So we don't have to do all at once. Our timeframe, our timeframe, it's all dependent on the state. You know, we've been waiting patiently, so we're not in a huge rush. We understand that you guys had to have the bylaws approved and we did a little stalking, but...
Jen, thank you for not, you know, thank you for answering our calls and messages, but...
And Hillary has been amazing too.
Yes.
We're looking to form a partnership with you guys and grow with you guys. So, you know, we want to do it on your terms. So our timeframe really depends on the state and their approval process. We heard that they're rushing and approving people very quickly, but that doesn't always fit what we're trying to do. We, once we're approved, if we're approved, I should say, we, it would take us, the cultivation would be probably about six to eight months for us to actually be ready to put a plant in there. And then obviously, if we were to have to build a building, that would take substantially longer time. But we'd be ready to do that as soon as we were approved.
One concern that I would have is that Lincoln Street is, I'd like to have public service and the police department provide some guidance.
Yeah, absolutely.
As to the traffic and the like.
You mean for a retail establishment?
For a retail establishment.
And...
Absolutely. We've stalked the chief before. And that's...
Talk about role reversal there.
Yeah, being in our industry, we're not scared of having the conversation with the police chief or any police officer. You know, we allow the city of Providence at any level, we can walk right through our building. So we've had them kind of do an overall security kind of overhaul, just to make sure we have everything. And that's the same conversations that we would have with him. So, and absolutely, traffic is, and that's exactly why we weren't going to initially push for retail because we weren't sure that it was quite ready for it. Because we weren't, because it is off the main road. But there's plenty of parking there. It has nice lighting right now and obviously we would be putting a lot of substantial lighting and security. The criteria is very high for what we have to do for security. And in our building, our current building, we've gone above and beyond because we've had little security breaches and things like that where a kid in the neighborhood tried to steal our compost. We never want that to happen. I know.
But they think they're getting, you know, they...
If they really understood that they got cocoa and leaves and stalks and stems, there's nothing, we are never going to throw anything good in the garbage. Like, I promise you, we sell everything. So, you know, we keep it inside now. There's little things that we've learned that we have to do, so. We have attached a letter from the state of Rhode Island acknowledging that we are in good standings with our current license. So Norman, oh, he didn't put his contact information, but, oh, he did. He said that he would be happy to answer questions from anyone regarding our license and how we conduct business. Do you have any questions for us?
The town is in a bit of a revenue crunch.
Yes, understood.
How could you help us?
Every, so having a host agreement is, it's not something that's on the paper, but we've done a lot of research on our host agreements and things like that. And obviously, we would be willing to negotiate with you guys on that. We see it as an opportunity for you guys, for us to be able to support it.
We're very fair in business. You know, we can sleep at night. We're, and we're very good to our employees and to our vendors.
And to our community.
And to our community.
We want you guys to have the lights on or whatever it is that, whatever revenue that we can support for you guys, we want you guys to be able to put it towards whatever you need.
How many employees do you think you would need for just the cultivation piece?
For cultivation, probably between three and six. It's, we're a small business. At no point will we have, you know, a massive amount of cars unless we were to do retail. I think that if, for like manufacturing, it's not going to be a 24-hour thing. So we'll have security and things like that, but maybe another four or five employees on that side.
It still brings, you know, eight to 10 jobs in Millville.
Right, that's right.
And it's something the town voted in favor of.
Right.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, the one thing that I know that the state cannabis commission is looking at is not just being able to roll things out, but for our town, even though we passed our bylaw, we have two licenses available, whether they be one for cultivation, one for retail, both for retail. So the license, no matter what it is, is we have only two that are available. So I know this board is going to be looking at, you know, the different types of host agreements that may come along with either a retail function or not. There's another step that this town has to take, especially there is, you know, this notion that there's more potential on the retail side because it's a combination of both a host agreement plus the sales. And the 3% sales would come to the town. We will be needing, and we will put on the docket for fall town meeting, a bylaw change that allows the town to actually get that sales tax, retail tax from that. So that's another step that we're going to be doing. So I think as we go forward, you know, the board is looking for the best kinds of host agreements and situations that make sense for the community. There's another piece to this and that has to do with the competitive nature of looking at something and wanting to, you know, bring in what we can and do it in a way that I think makes sense for the town. So the part of, you know, sending in the non-compete letter there, I think that I want to just encourage the public, for anybody who's just listening today, this is just the beginning.
Right.
There is a whole planning board that actually would look at whatever proposal. And they would actually, not only for the site plan, but, you know, for the permitting part of the business. So that can be stopped at any point in time.
This is the piece that lets us get our application rolling.
Right, to the state.
Right.
And I just always keep saying that because I don't want people to be alarmed that, you know, the board of selectmen get to make this decision and then, you know, we start collecting money. It doesn't work quite like that.
You guys can give, you know, give those letters to 10 other companies.
Right, right. The state does require us to hold a public meeting in the town so that if there's questions, concerns, comments, any, anything that needs to be addressed and that's something that we would potentially have to host. So we're absolutely open to it because we want everybody in the community to feel comfortable with the decisions that they're making, so.
And avoid any misconceptions.
Right, right.
Evil rumors like that.
Right. I drove through Charlton going out to my sister's house and I saw signs in people's yards that said, "Keep mega marijuana out of our neighborhoods." And I like stopped and I was like, I pulled over and I texted, because we're not allowed to text and drive in Rhode Island. So I pulled over and I texted my sister and I was like, wow, wow, like, look at this. And I was like, I'm not mega marijuana. Like, it is us.
Mini.
Right, yeah, we're mini marijuana.
Micro.
Right, micro in the state of Rhode Island. Like, we are like a small family business. Our husbands are super supportive and her husband does our books for us. Like, it's amazing. But like, our friends work for us, you know, like, we are like a really tight-knit group and we really, really love going to work every day. You know, my parents never thought that this is what I was going to do, but, you know, they're proud of me because, you know, I went to business school.
You're an entrepreneur.
Right, I went to business school and I like say, I joke, I'm like, I have a management degree and I don't use it. Well, I do use it every day. It just happens to be that I play with plants for most of my day. I never thought that I'd walk up to a marijuana plant and say, "Oh my God, it smells so good." Because I never thought that I would want that. But being a patient and being a patient advocate, like, it's changed my world. And whether it's recreational or medicinal, I'm always going to use it for a medicinal purpose. So, you know, and as will you, so. But we just want to do the separation between a big business and a small, like, we're fairly local. I live in Gloucester, Rhode Island, so we're really close.
Which is why we ended up getting here at the time we got here, by the way.
You can't get there from here.
No.
And I think the other thing that, there's a couple of things that might make it uniquely different for you is that anything grown in Massachusetts has to stay in Massachusetts.
Oh, yeah.
There cannot be any...
We can't, that would be trafficking.
We're very familiar with laws.
Somebody asked us recently, who was it? And somebody that I was really surprised.
DEA agent doing a bust. But before we were licensed, we were in the build-out phase. Our building's in Providence, so it's not in the nicest neighborhood. So I looked at the cameras, the cameras were installed and I was like, I called my husband, I'm like, "Oh my God, the FBI, the DEA, ICE, they're all in our parking lot." Like, what am I supposed to do? I get there and they were going down the street, but they were using our parking lot. And so they asked, like, "What are you doing there?" My husband was like, "Cassie, if they were coming for you, they wouldn't park in your parking lot." That's right? Yeah. So I was like, I was like, "All right, I can drive up there, so I do." They must have like thought I was crazy, but they were like, "You were sweating when you pulled up." And I was like, "No kidding, like, my patient garden's in there." Like, and so they were like, "Oh, are you allowed to go to Massachusetts with that?" And I was like, I looked at him, I was like, "That's trafficking." Like, I know what the laws are, so, yeah, no, we can't. Like, possession-wise, I believe your reciprocity, we're allowed to possess an ounce in the state of Rhode Island, we're allowed to cross the border with it or no?
Uh, no.
No, okay, so, nothing is in my car. I'm just going to say that. But, yeah, so I don't cross the border with it. We would not be, and so the state uses a seed-to-sale tracking system, similar to the one that we use, different companies in Massachusetts, but we can't even take out of our building for our personal use. Like, it is tracked. Like, everything, they know exactly in the computer system.
Right down to the stuff that we put in our compost.
Right, like, we weigh the waste. Like, we know where everything is.
You have 26 cameras. You're on camera with everything.
Everything you do, except in the restroom, but everything you do is on camera. Even our roof is secured with a camera because we were advised that that could be something that would happen. And never did I ever think that, but, yeah, like...
Somebody did have a roof peel in Providence.
Rhode Island, yeah.
Was it in Providence or Warwick?
But, yeah, every part of our building is secured, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, I mean, we signed one, we've signed one. And I think competition and information and dialogue between anybody who's interested in coming in town, which gives us revenue.
Absolutely.
Is definitely, you know, worth it. And so, you know, I wish you luck.
Thank you.
And, you know, see what happens going forward.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
And anytime if you guys need anything, I'll give you my card. Lisa, do you have yours?
Yes. I had to think about that for a minute because I changed that.
I can keep them going?
Yeah, that would be wonderful.
But anytime... But anytime, we're accessible, so.
So, I, I think with your presentation tonight, if the board can, you know, think of any other questions and maybe on our next agenda, think about actually sending the, the non-opposition letter. The one thing we learned that, the last time, is that there was question of whether the other company wanted to do a medical cultivation. They had said no, which means that we don't have to send a non-opposition letter only for the medical marijuana cultivation, yes, in Massachusetts. It's, yeah-
It's a requirement of the application.
I spoke with the cannabis control guy.
Really?
Yeah, and he told me if they're just doing specifically retail, but if they're doing, yeah, cultivation for medical or medical dispensary, then the non-opposition letter.
Interesting.
Yeah, that's, that's what the-
We ordered the packet, and it says it right in, I thought it said it right in there, and it may have changed, it might be version three.
I was going to send it along, and they told me, "Don't send it unless they're actually going to do that." So, I just was-
Interesting.
So that's why you would fit the bill for a non-opposition letter based on that. So, unless the fellow that's second-in-charge with the executive director told me something erroneous, but that's what we had, you know, looked at.
Yeah, I'll look at our packet, too.
Okay.
Awesome.
How bizarre is that, that you'd need non-opposition for doing medical but not recreational?
Right.
And recreational is-
You would think you'd have more opposition.
We'll double-check it, but that's what I was told, but-
We might both call and get two different answers, it's like calling the IRS.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're also in the process of evolving, you know, aspects of it, so it may be a regulation standard that they set up and thought it's not really necessary for the other places. So, but regardless, I, you know, for yours, I, you know, but based on what they would say, we would do that, so.
Okay, absolutely.
What would you prefer to have in your town?
I'm not, you know, I think the board has to make a determination by what actually would be the full proposal.
Right.
You know, tonight, we're just talking.
Right, absolutely.
When you put together a full, you know, site plan and proposal that would go before the planning board, I think then it becomes, the rest of the community gets involved and-
I think it's the purpose of what's going on, where it's located, you know, how, it's the big picture of it all.
Right.
So to say tonight, yes or no, or what?
No, 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 you're 100% correct.
I think that's a huge conversation.
That was a question that I was too prepared to-
Right, I mean, the revenue opportunity for recreational is far larger than medical. There's a limit, because there's a patient limit, well, not a limit, but that number, I personally think the number of patients will probably stay either where it is or become lower because more people aren't going to have to pay to have a license because it's recreational, so I think that you'll find that. But in Colorado and places like that, you find that, well, everywhere, they're kind of doing, like, medical is like the cleanest medicine, the more top-shelf medicine, and then recreational, in some places, they're allowed to use pesticides and things like that, so it kind of is a lower grade of cannabis. So, for me, I'll keep my medical license all the time, but it's different.
Well, yeah, because then it turns into self-medicating, for some.
Right, for some, absolutely.
If they don't get, want to go for the license, if they don't want to go for the municipal license.
Yeah.
Or prescription.
Absolutely. Well, thank you all for having us.
Thank you very much.
Safe travels.
Thank you.
I don't know.
Just go towards the bright light of North Smithfield. Use it with my little hands.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
On another note, our building in Rhode Island, we keep very secret, but we would like to invite you.
Okay.
And so, if you are interested, we just don't, that's not written publicly anywhere.
Okay. I'll check with the board, and if maybe we can, you know, if they're interested in doing a tour, we'll just set it up. Sounds good?
Yep, the last DEA bust down there. We'll have a circum-
Black windows, the whole thing.
There we go.
Good start.
I know.
Moving on.
Right.
CMR PC, both elected delegate, delegate and alternate.
Mr. Chairman, I was the delegate this past year. I did not make one meeting just because of my schedule. I don't mind being your delegate, but if somebody's more apt to be able to go, it'd probably be more, definitely be more beneficial, I feel, to the board.
Do I have an interest?
I can't sign on for one.
Even though I heard the donuts were good.
Yeah, the, um-
That's fine.
Someone switch the phone.
I think one of the reasons I never am able to attend, and I'm just looking at the dates, is it falls on Thursdays.
Yeah, I did put it right into your packet.
And, yeah, the quarterly meetings, and I know I have my Girl Scouts.
Yeah.
So, in the, in the event that I don't have anything work-related or thereabouts, I'd be happy to go, should we not get another delegate.
So, I can check with the planner as far as the delegate goes. It usually is somebody that gets, you know, nominated through the planning board. I think we had a hiatus, and the alternate, you know, gets appointed by the Board of Selectmen or the town administrator. So, I think you have one appointment for this evening, if, you know, that takes some of the pressure off, you know, for you guys to decide who might want to do that, and, and then, you know, work with the planning board, you know, to actually, you know, have that. They may have already decided, for all I know, it could be on their agenda, I did not look at their agenda.
I was going to say, who is their delegate?
Right, right, so, you know, they get, they go through this annually at this time of year, too, so I'll find out, but, you know, if we can have somebody who would be willing to-
Are these meetings starting in the day? Does it say it on here somewhere?
No, they're usually in the evening. No, they're like 5:30 or 6:30 to whenever.
Worcester.
Remember, you're an alternate, so you're, you're supposed to help the delegate be there. You know, the big thing about CMR PC, it's not just about the technical assistance that they give us, you know, they do weigh in heavily in terms of determining road improvement projects, and, and so, you can weigh in and, in particular, advocate for those kinds of things. Even if that's all that you do, it would be, you know, I think, an important contribution to make, particularly when they're actually addressing the review of the transportation improvement project listing.
And I think they'll, the planning board should be appointing a new one, because last year they had Mrs. Barrett, it says in their letter. So they'll probably be addressing the same issue.
Okay. And it's only four meetings.
Yeah.
So do we have anybody that would like to, or you want to weigh?
I've done it in the past, right, thinking of recurring.
Andrew, how about you? Not interested in the, yeah?
Depends on my schedule, I lay down, so I'm not sure how much, you know, because at some point in me going, if I can't, you know, make it or whatnot, so.
Okay. I know I couldn't make two of the meetings right off the bat, so.
Alternate, remember, alternate.
An alternate.
I know what that means.
You're filling in.
I know what that means, if you're, Tom's alternate. Just saying.
I say put it on a future agenda item.
Okay.
It wouldn't be, you would be the alternate to whoever the-
Only if the planning person doesn't go, then we have to communicate that to you.
Yeah. All right. We'll put it on a future agenda. I tried, but, yeah.
Well, nobody can travel on September 13th, that's just bad luck, so.
It's a Thursday. Thursday nights, that's when I do my scout stuff.
Okay, so.
No, future, future. Now, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you'll see, I put in your packet information that's come from Colonial Power. As you know, we went through our first aggregation agreement that we went with Nextera, and I think I had also provided in your packets the amount of money aggregation savings when we did a comparison. We went with a energy rate of about 11 cents, and that was a total wind power-driven energy rate. And when you compare that with the national grid's green power product, actually, the amount of savings that they had predicted for us was comparing us to the lower rate for national grid, which they call the brown energy rate, and they predicted we'd actually save about $45,000 collectively, town residents, business, and the town. When you compare apples to apples, a green product to a green product, the national wind product that we have and the national grid's green product, we've saved about $95,000 collectively across the town. The reason why I'm talking about this is because our 12-month contract is coming up to an end in November. Colonial has reached out to me, this is like going on, you know, the stock market.
This is the one you have to be on the phone?
Absolutely, right. So, they typically give us an indicative pricing and then the final pricing, because now I've done it several times, we passed on the first one, went with the second one, there was a third one that they offered, I passed on that. And so, what I was going to say is, knowing that November is coming up, the one thing that Mark Capadona had explained to us is that the southeast and mass electricity region has extra capacity, and they've been forewarning us that the prices, if residents see their prices, especially for people who didn't go in with the aggregation, may have seen a spike up in the pricing for their electricity. And that's because the region has excess capacity. They had predicted that by next spring, the rates would be much higher, not just this spring, 2019. So, we have to pick some kind of product because it will expire with Nextera on, in November. Right now, the current projections are putting that the winter residential basic brown rate for national grid will be about 13.5 cents. Now, we just enjoyed a 11.4 rate. So, they're anticipating that they're going to come out on September 12th. If you would like, again, this doesn't mean we have to enter into an agreement, but instead of giving us the indicative pricing, which is a lot of work for these guys to do, they will give us the final pricing right after Labor Day, before national grids rates come out, and we have a board meeting, you know, on that Tuesday. I would try to share that with you, and then if we see a very favorable rate for a 12-month or an 18-month, I would suggest that, you know, once again, I, I can go on the market with them, and then if we see something, you know, confer with, with the board quickly and go with something, because it's like a two-hour window that you have to decide this. So, I'm becoming a little bit more comfortable with that, but I, I have no problem with them giving us a final pricing the week of Labor Day, week, and then go out, when they go out to market, and see if we can get a favorable rate and then make a decision. Because we, we know that that rate probably will be even driven up higher in the spring. So, just trying to keep people, you know, you know, in, in a know about what you'd like to do.
Keeps for green, green energy, if it's in the 12.5 cent range, that's a damn good rate, I think, going forward.
Well, and then November, remember, you know, the, once national grid puts it out, then they all start adjusting up with, so if we can lock into something potentially before that national grid rate comes out. If it doesn't look favorable, looks too close, based on their anticipation of where they can project some savings for national grid, we don't, you know, once again, I'll pass and then go back out, you know, as it gets closer to November, you know, so, so we don't have to. So if all I'm asking for from tonight would be a vote to actually look to secure a market rate, you know, prior to the national grids release, and if you let me do that, then I can share that with you, but just so that you know, it's, it's going to be structured a little bit different. We wouldn't do the indicative, we'll just do the final pricing and then share it with the board, and then, you know, find out what the market will be, and I can go back and forth and then make a determination with you.
And the Colonial Power group usually gives you a good sense of what's-
Yes.
What's going on in the market in regards to electricity.
Yes, absolutely, and that's why they're thinking that this might be actually a favorable time before national grid does its rates, and they start to creep up, you know? And they might, we might be able to, I'm going to ask for the longer projection so that maybe we can get through that, you know, before the capacity actually changes and the rates start to drop. You know, we, we expected that, especially next winter, is going to be quite high.
Okay.
And so far, with the determination this board had to put together an aggregation agreement and to go with that, we've already, you know, saved the town not only $45,000 for their pricing, but with the win-to-win capacity, one actually saved more like $95,000. That doesn't include the last couple months. That was November to March. So, that's all I have from them on the savings report, so it's even higher than that. So, we've, we've done well for the community. So hopefully, we can land another good rate and do that again.
So that needs to go to a vote?
I would, I feel, I think, you know, so that I can actually, you know, be directed to get the final pricing from them, and, you know, they would feel comfortable with that.
So I make a motion to allow the town administrator to get final pricing from this energy group, so we can move forward.
Second. Rule.
Aye.
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 Thank you. All right, I'll share that with all of you.
KP Law hopes to consent to pursue intermunicipal agreement for public health director nursing services.
Mr. Chairman, of course, all of the aspects of the budget that we're looking at in terms of looking at the overall deficit that we have, we're looking at everything from trying to raise revenue to trying to save money by entering into whatever regional agreements. We've done a number of them in the past, we're going to continue to look at that and explore that. Tonight I have before you just a letter that is coming from our legal counsel. One of the things I did was to look at some particular costs the town incur's through contractual services. One of them is a VNA contract that we've had that's been longstanding, that usually had been administered through the Board of Health prior to a town administrator coming. I met with our admin in the Board of Health, in the Board of Health in its entirety, to talk about the fact that I thought we could do better on this particular current agreement that we had. We pay $2,500 a year to an organization that has done our flu clinics and followed up on communicable, reportable diseases. Upon closer scrutiny, the majority of the flu clinic advertising and the work that we would be requiring of that agency really did not amount to the $2,500 in, in the actual cost. So, there is a regional effort that many towns, I think there's at least nine towns, nine or 11 towns that already are going through the public health nurse in the town of Sutton. The difference here is the cost. The public health nurse there would and does the flu clinics in these other towns. They do not charge the town for the public flu clinics that they run. They charge the insurance companies, and that's all. What the one cost that they would incur for our town would be if there's communicable diseases and they have to follow up, both with the state and filing paperwork and the like. They gauge that they probably can save us anywhere between $1,300 and $1,500. So in order to, for me to actually bring you the intermunicipal agreement, and I know the Board of Selectmen in Sutton, we would probably be one of the last communities, so we're lucky to get on board with them. They would be making their decision for the intermunicipal agreement, I think, tomorrow night. We need to sign off on the fact that we both have KP Law, and KP Law would be the ones actually drafting the intermunicipal agreement. So tonight, I need a vote from your board that would allow us the consent to pursue it for the public health director services, but it would allow the KP Law to represent both towns.
And I'd be asking for a vote to sign the KP Law agreement, this is, there are two copies.
So moved.
Discussion?
I just have a question. I know this is for KP, so, but it's still kind of related.
Sure.
Obviously, all the flu clinics still occur in Millau.
Mm-hmm.
So is that the piece that needs to be negotiated, the price, the-
No, there is no price, that's the thing. They don't even charge us.
Well, you said $1,300 to $1,500.
Oh, no. The contract that for, the existing contract right now costs us $2,500. They are not going to charge us to do the flu clinics at all. The other agreement we had had charges for setup, charges for, I don't know what the setup would be, you know, bringing materials, you know, probably syringes and the like, and then charges for the person- and then charges for the personnel that actually administered it. They don't do that. They, they bill the insurance company, um, and because the organization, uh, that we had been contracted with for the V and A services was also billing the insurance company. So, they would get us in that. So, um, if we can do this in that regard, uh, we wouldn't be being charged at all for the flu clinics. It's the other pieces which might require a public health nurse for following up if you have a salmonella outbreak or, you know, any other number of reportable diseases. That does require, they get notified from the hospital and, and the number of cases we have is really been very, very low. Nowhere near, what they know. But, I mean, I understand it, it's been an agreement, we've been in for a long time and it's, like anything, it, it, it inches its way up.
Okay. That's all I have.
Sure.
A second.
Rule?
Aye.
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 And once I get the intermunicipal agreement for the next one, I'll see if I can have the actual public health nurse come down, Cheryl Rowinsky.
Basically, all we're doing tonight is indemnification for
Right, for the, for the attorneys at this point. But we need to sign that and then we're gonna need some, so I figured, why don't we get that done? They'll send us the agreement, then we'll touch on the agreement.
Next, I'll be asking for a vote to approve, uh, post the state primary, uh, twenty-eleven election warrant. You have a copy of, of that warrant?
Yeah, this year, the state primary comes right, um, right after Labor Day. And so, uh, I think our town clerk wants to get the information out there and, um, on her actual pamphlet. She did talk about the last days, um, to register to vote and the like. So, I know she's eager to get it, uh, posted and, uh, we'll be signing multiple copies that will be posted, uh, after we get your approval.
Do you need that vote now and then we'll sign it later?
Yes, that would be great.
So, I make a motion to vote to approve and to post the state primary two thousand and eighteen election warrant. Second?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Rule, business, um, item A, uh, move to elementary school capital fire suppression panel replacement and water tank line. I invite, uh, the chief.
One of the things, I, I put this back on the agenda because I know there had been some discussions, um, in, in circles outside this building about concerns about the elementary school, um, being able to open. The last time, we had the fire chief and the building commissioner here, um, and some of the, um, work that the chief was doing was a little bit separate because they have different aspects to, um, what their concerns are. The building commissioner was the one who actually was assessing the building back in the fall for public access. And, um, the chief, obviously, is the one who has been following up with myself and the former superintendent on, you know, identifying the, the problem to be fixed. So, I'm gonna turn it over to the chief because I think he'll be happy with, um, what he has to say. And I know that our building commissioner has been in close touch with the chief and, uh, I think we're all on the same page and things are gonna get repaired.
I did speak to Tri-State today and the panel will be here by the second week of September. It will be installed quickly thereafter. The school will open on time. Uh, the current panel is working. It's safe, it's a safe environment, there's no threat whatsoever. So, we're simply waiting for the panel. Once it arrives, it's installed.
It can be done on the weekend.
As quick as that, be done on the weekend, so there's no disruption of school. So, I anticipate any problems at all, I expect to be on the budget. But at the end of the day, it's, it's all good.
My children will be upset.
They were hoping for a delayed school.
Maybe, maybe, maybe.
I did speak to, uh, the building inspector and he agreed, uh, the system's operating like it was last year.
Good.
So, there's no reason why we cannot open the school. So, it's gonna open and once it's, and once it arrives, it'll be installed.
Can you give me some good news on the water, uh, tank?
You're asking for a lot tonight. Yeah, actually, um, the existing plans for the school, uh, they weren't very clear. So, last week, we identif- we identified the location of the pipe, the actual location of the pipe from the tank to the building. We found that last week. They're coming back on Thursday to locate the exact location of the leak. Uh, with different equipment. Once we find the exact location of the leak, we'll make a determination how it's gonna be fixed. We, we're going this way because it didn't make sense to start to dig, uh, one end and keep digging till you found the leak. My luck, I would've found it on the other side. So, we're gonna wait, get the location of the leak and we'll make the repairs soon after. So, we are losing water, it's not a threat, we simply replenish the tank every day. But we're losing about one hundred and seventy-five gallons. But there's no sinkhole because it's probably built on ledge and the water's simply running with the, uh,
Going back into the water table.
Exactly, back to the water table. That's why we can't readily find it without specific equipment. So, it's, um, not a, I don't think it's a big deal, I think it's a, uh, it's an older pipe, it's twenty-five years old with joints. I think a joint sprung a leak. But we have to find it before we decide with Charlie to start to dig.
You say this coming Thursday?
Ah, this Thursday. We'll be done. So, once we find the leak, I'll come before the board and, uh, we'll get a price from three or four vendors to dig it and we'll get the best price and we should be all set. I won't anticipate any problems with that.
We shed aside some capital?
Yes, the capital planning committee had met in advance, um, of our actual annual town meeting. This was one of the items, uh, we had met back in February with, uh, March, uh, the superintendent. And, uh, we knew this expense was coming and, yes, it is covered by, uh, the vote of the town meeting. And, uh, so the, uh, capital is there in our townwide capital fund, um, and it's marked for this particular project as well as the project that will come, um, from the high school. It's just that we're not, you know, driving that particular, um, initiative right now.
The, the cost for our Thursday is sixteen hundred dollars, which is far cheaper than the salary Charlie starting to dig like I mentioned. So, it's money well spent. So, that's it.
Thank you for the update.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Central Street, Mass Works, project update.
I, I feel, um, bad because I know our, um, highway surveyors and the other, um, room, uh, for planning board. But we both wanted to put this on the agenda. I know that there's been concern about the project. Initially, when the state had come out, they were trying to fast-track the project, um, as much as possible. We embraced that, uh, until we started to actually do the true engineering and design and found out we had, you know, uh, eight inches of concrete underneath the, uh, roadway and so
You didn't know that?
Well, you know, when you're, when you're going for the million dollars, you go for the million dollars. It's not that you don't, but, um, million dollars can only be stretched so far. So, what we, um, did is actually, uh, add more of our chapter ninety to try to stretch the project. We've also met with, um, the T E C engineers to look at the possibility that, um, you know, we can change up some of what we were looking to, to put. There's, uh, questions about wanting to be able to get it as far to not just Providence, um, intersection, but to go beyond. So, we have a complete streets grants of two hundred thousand that already is going to be doing the sidewalk from Providence all the way to the Rhode Island border. But we'd like to stretch out, obviously, all of the resurfacing to that, um, place. There's one other thing that I'm gonna keep my fingers crossed. I've been working with, um, some people, uh, at the State House that have looked at small towns in relation to Mass Grants. And, um, oftentimes, we're precluded from being able to apply just once every three years. So, even if they wanna make an adjustment, um, and be helpful, I'm talking about the state agency, they can't. And it's just an old sort of, uh, piece of the law that has prevented small towns. We'll know in the next couple days, but this is where the project is at regardless. We, it is going forward, the final design is being done, um, by the end of September. We'll make the choices, um, maybe even before then, of what things we might change a little bit to make it, the project go as far as possible. And then, uh, the other piece of it is the, um, bids will go out and the bids will be opened in, uh, beginning of January and the whole project starts immediately in this, in the, uh, spring and it will be done. And when I say that, then we know that we can move forward. The contribution that we're making, uh, with chapter ninety is an important contribution. If I have the ability to get the agency to reframe what the, um, original contract is, we have a possibility of saving some of that chapter ninety money, which I wanna be able to put back to be used for other roads in town, since we only get a hundred and ten, um, per year. So, so if I can do that and it happens, you'll know about it in advance. If not, we're gonna go with the design we have and we'll get the project done and it'll still look beautiful and it'll be a, a huge improvement. So, just wanted people to know because some people have asked that question and I thought it was good to update you on that.
Thank you. Selectmen's forum.
So, I had asked, um, I think item that listed, and, and so I guess, uh, I'll ask Mr. Alward. I wasn't fortunate enough to be at the meeting at B M R and so, I had, and I've expressed this to you before, concerns in, in your, um, participation within what we do. So, I guess I just wanted to ask because I wasn't part of the conversation during, because I was via phone or after, that may have occurred. But I was just curious as to, um, you know, why, why we, you know, why we had our meeting here. We discussed moderators, possible moderators from various towns, what we wanted to see in a moderator. And you didn't, you didn't participate, but then when you went to Blackstone, you voted, um, for someone who actually represents Blackstone, is not, you know, I'm sure he will be impartial to the best of his abilities, but the appearance of impropriety. So, I guess I just wanted to ask you for your explanation on that.
Well, I personally wanted to do research onto it, so at that meeting, I hadn't done any research into anything. So, I had really no, uh, insight into what I was going to vote on or what I was gonna do, that's why I didn't say anything. Since that time, I had done research on possible candidates in and around this area. And when he was, the moderator, it was, um, motioned and seconded, I thought that it would be the best person that we could possibly get. Because if we hadn't, if I had voted with Millville, I believed, believe that we would've had a, lines drawn on town, on which town we're from, and we would've had a deadlock and it would've never been resolved. So, I fully believe that we would have, uh, that was the best candidate and that, uh, was the best outcome for
For Millville?
For the, for both towns, for the whole thing.
Because you represent Millville?
I know what, what town I represent, yeah.
Because when you, when you have someone from Blackstone leading a meeting, that could be, you know, it's, it's, the lines have been drawn. They have been drawn, so that's, that's what I needed, you know, to hear.
Well, if you're a moderator for any debate or any event or the chairman of any board, you have to be impartial, no matter what.
And basically, this board agreed, is, is a board, to select a neutral moderator, not either working or residing in the, the town that
That was an understanding, but we never agreed to it.
The problem here is that we had the town, it invited a neutral moderator into the town, but by your vote, you precluded or eliminated the opportunity for discussion. And that was a huge mistake.
That's in your opinion?
So, so I guess, I guess my concern, I, and I've, I've said it before, when we're here, I mean, we had the incident, listening to the, the earbuds, we have the texting on your phone under the table, and then we have a discussion. We have a whole discussion here at the table and you don't say a word.
Because I hadn't done any research. I don't speak if I don't know what I'm doing.
Well, that makes a lot of sense now. So, if you go from that meeting to the meeting on Wednesday, you didn't feel a need to reach out to, to the chair or someone else saying, I'm, I'm looking
It's against, it's against open meeting law to discuss a decision before meeting.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
It's illegal
Nope, nope, one-on-one is counted.
No, you could call the chair and say, I would like some other considerations.
Well, I didn't even know who Millville's candidate was.
We, we talked about them that night.
No, we didn't.
We actually
Yes, we did, but we had said the name of the Yuck Bridge and the Bellingham.
We said we hadn't discuss, decided which one, so how was I
No, no, no.
They were possible candidates.
Possible.
So, just to back to the, the discussion piece, if you discuss something with the chair, if he turns around and then tells me what you discussed, that's a violation of the open meeting. But if you called him and said, I have another candidate or two that I would like to look at or consider, could you please, you know, that, because it was an, an agenda item to be prepared for. I think that would've been appropriate.
Are you talking about the meeting that we had the understanding at? Or what, what are you talking about, to, to call the chairman about the agenda item?
Well, because we had the agenda to discuss moderators and we had already had the discussion. So, if you had more to add to that, you could've reached out.
I wasn't sure who, who the candidate would be for anything. I had done my research, so I knew who the candidate, who they suggested to be the candidate was, but I hadn't decided until that night because I didn't know who would've been.
Well, at least he should've had the opportunity to get up and, and present it to the two boards.
Possibly, yes.
No, the motion was made by Mr. Keefe. And his mistake was, he didn't ask for discussion. And he immediately asked for a vote.
The motion was made by Mr. Dubois.
Yeah, it was made by Mr. Dubois.
Not Mr. Keefe.
It was requested by Mr. Keefe.
Yeah, but I, I think my concern, what Blackstone is, does, is what Blackstone does. I, I'm, I'm not gonna be, I don't like what happened. I think it was apparent, I was on very loud speakerphone, which we don't usually have. So, I was projecting my voice, I wasn't happy. I think that Millville isn't, wasn't fairly represented. And I'm disappointed that we had a discussion at this table and then there is no more. And I don't care if you disagree with us. I mean, I've disagreed with everyone at this table at one point or another. But I think the fact is that we are the Millville representatives and we are the ones who go in there. And we had a plan, we talked about that. We asked Mrs. Callahan to send a letter to Blackstone stating what we wanted and then just to not be part of the team in the sense for Millville. I'm not saying we all have to agree all the time, but when you go in to negotiate for different things, we go in with a united friend of some sort.
We don't have to go, do, we don't represent, we represent Millville, but we're, at the bottom line, we have to do what we believe is right.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter about towns.
So, you, excuse me. So, you did what you thought was right for the town
I can make noise too. Chief?
Yes, they did, again, just give them a warning. So, you, so, just for the record, you believe that you did what was best
Yes.
for Millville?
Yes.
Can, can they be removed?
You can give them a warning.
Yeah. No more outbreaks or outbursts.
Mr. Chair, please make the, the motion, the, uh, the warning known. If the outbreaks continue, we'll have to ask for relief. That's all. To put her on notice and if she continues, she'll leave.
Thank you. All right, well, I just wanted to make sure I had it for the record for the people who have addressed me, who've asked me what was going on, I wasn't there. I've watched the meeting, but, you know, you, you don't get a sense of what happens in a meeting through, through TV. Sorry, Tim, um, because there are little nuances that occurs that you, you don't get to see or, or small remarks that you don't get to hear. So, if that's what you think is the best for Millville, then I'm glad we have it on the record.
I, I do, um, on a, on a tangential, um, uh, part of this thread, I do want you to know that, um, town moderator Ed Mahari did send an email after that. I, I know that he was disappointed not to be able to at least, um, speak to both boards. The one thing I, and I was not there, I was here at a lengthy, um, council on aging meeting, which I thought was important to attend. And I think that, you know, going forward, when you are actually working together jointly or if you're on your own board, the parliamentary procedure part about opening for nominations, usually, the chairman will entertain, you know, nominations, you, first and second, and you will ask, are there any other nominations? And then, you close the nomination process and then you take your vote. So, it's just, regardless of what happened, I wasn't there. And, you know, there was no, I think, um, interjecting at that point, um, about that procedure. But for one another, I would encourage you to, to think of that process. And, um, and I, and I personally, um, you know, thank Mr. Mahari for even coming down and, um, extending, um, information to the board, uh, again, not expecting to be chosen necessarily, but to, um, have, you know, opened himself to that. And I think as a longstanding town moderator in another town, not, um, somebody who's not a town moderator, you know, I'm not a town moderator, I just, I respect a town moderator, you know, I'm not a town moderator, I just, I respect those, those processes, and, and I know that, you know, there's, there's no begrudging here, it's just that, you know, if, if hindsight is, you know, 20/20, you know, I would have refrained if the process hadn't, you know, gone a different way. So anyway, I appreciate what he opened up, and I just wanted to, to say that. Then he wishes the town best as it goes forward.
It would have been, I think, the board's advantage, identification if Mr. Doyle were able to make a presentation as well. We got a little railroad in there. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Chairman, I have one thing that I would just like to present for our next meeting, and I would like to ask that we have representatives from the Conservation Commission be able to come for that as well, regarding to Sunnyside Solar's request. So we don't need to go into it, it's not, it'll be on our next agenda, but if we could do that, I'd like to give this to our town administrator for preparation. Thank you.
Mrs. Callahan.
Oh, yes, town administrator update, thank you. I wanted to update the board, since the fiscal budget was passed on July 1st. I know we've kept the town informed on a number of levels for the votes that the town meeting had put together, so the townspeople had made and supported reductions that were contingent on and override not passing. And so the first order of business, as all of you know, has been about implementing those reductions. The second order of business has been making sure that I reach out to the respective boards in particular that have been most affected by those cuts, as well as the department heads that would have been most impacted by that. I have met with the trustees of the library, I've met with the Council on Aging, which has a pretty full new complement of a board. That's where I was the night that the moderator was being chosen between the two boards. So I want to say this, there's a couple of things that have been discussed. Obviously, the town meeting vote budget is what actually progresses from here, with the exception of the approximately $300,000 that needs to be closed. So my work with each one of these boards was to talk about any potential ways that we could keep some of the most salient pieces that are important to them, with the notion that hopefully we will get back to a normal level of service at some point in the future, when the town is thoroughly convinced that, you know, there are, there remains a structural deficit, and we have to address that. So having said that, we have some special accounts that have been set up for both the library, and in the past, the Council on Aging. I know our new, I can invite Pamela Dean Cabettish, who is our new Council on Aging chairman, if she'd like to come up. I know that with the seniors in particular, before I get to that, the library director, and myself, and the chair of the library trustees have talked about the reduced hour schedule, and are going to use revolving accounts to help pay the reduced hours of the current library director and some of the staff. They all understand that once that money runs out, there is no more money in the budget. So this is not a way to run a library, or run a certified library into perpetuity. It's a stopgap measure, and it's trying to use those resources that have been squirreled away, that are in special accounts, that have to be used for specific purposes. Some of those accounts cannot be touched for contributing to the actual wages of those people working. We had, I think, a very healthy dialogue with the Council on Aging recently. I'd like to welcome Pam Dean Cabettish, who had received, I think, a solid vote by the Council on Aging. We talked about a lot of things that are important to the seniors. My mission as a town administrator is that I didn't, I wasn't the one who chose the reductions in the overall budget to the senior center, but any way that I can help try to bridge that gap, I'm looking to do. I shared with the Council on Aging the full memo of the budget and the reductions that took place in the overall operating budget, and over a period of time, we discussed each of the special accounts that exist. There's not many of them. The largest portion is the van and the van gift accounts, and a smaller amount that goes to just gifts or donations. The finance director has given me, I think, a clearance to be able to use some of those special accounts with the approval, obviously, of the Council on Aging, and I think I sensed from Council on Aging members that if we could maintain some of the services that are most crucial to our seniors, knowing again that the goal here is to get back into the senior center in the future, it's just that there's no budget there, and I can't use, you know, money that is specific in certain accounts to be able to just put that money back. And there's not enough of it, anyway. So we had talked about the possibility of restoring some version of ride service for our seniors in town with, with the van. It would be a actual service that coincides with the intent of that original special account, revolving account, that, that would have to be met. We think we can do that if we could find someone to coordinate that. That was one piece. The second piece was the concern for flu clinics to be arranged, concern for the fact that the seniors center, and Jill, had been specifically the go-to person and place for fuel assistance. And we know it's going to be a rough, you know, fuel expense year, and I'm concerned about the number of people, not just the seniors in this town, but more importantly, the seniors that were reliant on that, not knowing how to go about, not only applying, but getting in the queue for that, before those kinds of funds run out. And so it really is important to get, you know, stabilized like that. And we also have a formula grant, and a formula grant that will have to be applied for, and that can be used. Now, we also talked about some of the functional aspects of programs and services, and that's a whole nother piece. But in order to make this happen, and I just want to convey this, and I'll let Pam talk a little bit about that, I don't think I'm misguided in my feelings from the Council on Aging, that if we could do something in a capacity that's limited, where we might be able to even pull somebody like Jill back, not as a senior director, because we can't, and trying to use the limited scope of some of the special accounts to make the ridership issue happen, so people can get to their doctor appointments, to make fuel assistance happen, and to make the flu clinic happen, and to help maybe seniors, even if they need a piece of equipment. We had someone donating and dropping off a wheelchair, you can see it out there. But we have nobody to coordinate that. And one of the things I think that the council recognizes is that going to be things that they can do, and we talked about being able to support some of the activities, even if it's not at the senior center, without having a director. But I think, having reached out to Jill, who's already currently in the market looking for another position, I think in a very limited way, we're going to talk about it so that we can preserve those monies specifically for the van ridership and the like, we might be able to piece together some hours with, that can happen, so we can restore that piece of it and keep it going. Again, once those funds run out, they run out. And, you know, we do have the van, and that would mean that we would have to restore ours for that as well. But we think we can do some of that, but again, it's a tailored, more outreach in organizing, and I have not finalized that with Jill. I'm hoping that we can maybe do it before she takes on employment somewhere else, and, you know, that precludes us from doing it. So I would ask Pam if there's anything else that I've missed in that.
Short-term, though, we can hold on to the van.
Right. Yes, for now. I mean, and if we don't use it, that's something that the state can reach in.
Well, I've expressed to you many, many times that we have to do something to save that van. We cannot lose that van again. When we lost that van to Blackstone, through their lack of wanting to help us and participate with us in servicing our seniors and disabled, it was a hard hit. It was, it was terrible. And that's something I spoke to you about, that we need to make sure that that is one thing, those are the people who are most vulnerable, they, they need those rides, they need the appointments, and we need to keep that van. I think that's, my personal opinion, is the first thing on the list, to, to make sure that we have up and running out of that, that Council on Aging, so.
And I have asked Pam that, as the, the current chair of the Council on Aging, that if we can, you know, bring Jill back within the next couple of weeks to do, you know, this limited scope, to get things going again, and to get our grant reapplied for, so that that can be used, you know, going forward, too. You don't want to miss the opportunity for that. Then I would have, you know, Pam work closely to, to see not only how that's done, but also, you know, to, to be able to keep the Council on Aging in the loop. So I don't know if you have anything to, to add, Pam?
Well, Jennifer, pretty much what you just said. But no.
Great minds.
As the new chairman of the board, I wanted to let you know that I'm delighted. I was unanimously voted in, and we do have some new members on our board, we have a full house, we have a seven-member board. I believe it's a nice, solid board. We have some old members, Sue Robbins is vice chair of the board, and Diane Lamro is the secretary, and Laurie Legere is her assistant. She's going to help, she's going to help her out with note-taking, and that type of thing, so we don't miss anything.
Great.
Three, two peers, three peers, always better than just one. And then also, we still have Lois LaFlemme, she's still on the board, and two new members, Elaine Ether from Millville is on the board, and also Tina Clark from Millville. And they've all been on other boards at one time or another, they've all had some experience. They all live here in Millville, and they all love the town. Jennifer did meet with us for our three-hour meeting. It was long, and it was a long meeting. And we welcomed her, and we also welcomed Diane Lockwood. She was very helpful going over a few of the policy things with us. As you know, every board has their rules and regulations and policies and procedures, and we're all learning them together as a new board. So getting back to priority, we know as, as a board that we're going to have to take baby steps, because there is no monies. But we did find a little bit of money, which is the great thing. I found out we have monies that I didn't even know we had, and we can get more if I can get, hopefully, Jill Anderson to guide me in how to do, how to do it. I have no idea. I've only been a member on the board since January, and I'm eager to learn, and Jill was full of experience. I hope that with a little bit of the monies that we have, we can bring her back on board. But the most important thing is to get that van going. And we have a lot of seniors in town that rely on that van for medical transportation, especially. Last year, there were over 400 rides, and Jill Anderson handled them all, to make sure that the van drivers were there, who, who she had, who, who would wear changes, I mean, she just did it all. And we had two good van drivers. From what I hear, they're both eager to come back. And everybody knows outright that it's going to be temporary. When the money runs out, the money runs out. But hopefully, we can stretch it, and the thing is, we got to get our priorities in order, and that is the van, getting those seniors to the doctor's appointments, which is crucial. The next thing is, is a flu clinic. Get that in order, make sure that everyone gets their flu shots, or whatever is necessary, what we need to do to do that. We've got to organize that and arrange it, maybe have it a couple of weeks, a couple days a week, for a couple of weeks, whatever, but all that has to be arranged. And again, Jill Anderson did it all last year, everything. And the third thing I thought that was crucial, that was mentioned by Jennifer, was-
Fuel assistance.
The fuel assistance. Having been a social worker 40 years for the state of Massachusetts, recently retired, I have worked with families for 40 years, families in need. I worked for the welfare department. And I can tell you, coming from this little tiny town, there is just as many needy people here as there is in Uxbridge, or Blackstone, or any other town. And if we don't help our little town of Millville, and especially our seniors, get this fuel assistance, they're going to lose their heat this winter, no question about it. Fuel is skyrocketing again. The weather's been, it was very cold last winter, so I don't see any change being coming up this winter. And again, who headed all that, who did all the work with all the seniors? It was through Jill Anderson. She's be ahead of it. She had help, but she's lost her help, and we lost her. I hope that some of the monies that we have found, however, how little, that we can, we can at least get her back in the play for us, because she just has done it all, always has done it all. And I, I wish I had her knowledge. I really do, I, you know, I, I want to work very closely with her, I want to work closely with Jennifer, and I want to work closely with other boards. And I will take any, any suggestions or recommendations, but the thing is, that when the money runs out, we understand that's it. But we need, we need, we need to start somewhere. And as a board, it's already August, and before you know it, the winter's going to come, the seniors still need the rides to the doctors, the seniors still need heat for their homes, and they still need their shots. And I think those are the three most important things, and we need to work on that really quick. And my board is so eager to do something good.
Yep.
And, you know, we'll, it's a learning process, we'll all learn how to apply for these grants. There's not a lot of money there, but anything's better than nothing. We'll take what we can get.
The social piece is also important for seniors.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we, as far as the senior center goes, and all that they did, all the extra pieces, was remarkable, absolutely remarkable, what they did for the seniors in their social piece. I can't tell you how outstanding, and what a community we have with the seniors. And everybody is suffering from this deficit, not, not, not just one person, not just one group, but everybody. And there are people out there, believe it or not, that are volunteering their homes to do a gym class, or do knitting and crocheting, you know what I mean? There are people out there wanting to help out. Whether or not there's money for these certain little groups, I'm not sure how that works. That's something I have to sit down with someone that, you know, that knows about the finances, and how, how we can distribute it, because certain monies can't be used for certain things. So we have to figure out what we, what we have, and we have to figure out, well, what's the most important? Got to get those, those seniors to their doctors, and we got to get them heat this winter. But the social part is crucial. It's crucial in mankind. It certainly is, and all those little things are very important. And there is people that are working on it, as far as getting the Chester Hill Community Center, possibly. We're waiting for their big meeting, and we're waiting to hear from them, what we can, what we might be able to rent, how that works, it's all up in the air.
It should be worked out.
Every little piece, there's, there's little pieces everywhere, everything's being worked on. And we have to wait and hear, but we get, we, we've, you know, we've got a buzz going everywhere.
I believe that, having heard some information from Jill today, I'm going to be meeting with her this weekend, I hope to have Pam at that meeting as well, so that the next Council on Aging meeting, they'll be able to report about that, and then also some of the aspects for the social piece, that maybe we can bridge with one small revenue account, until we actually can try to apply and get our formula grant in order, which is coming up for the, the month of August and, and early September. So if we can bring her on before she gets enticed anywhere else, I think that would be important. Again, it's a stopgap measure, it's not a way to run a senior center, we all know that, but it's the only thing that I can pull off, it's not in the regular budget, it's a, you know, revolving account patch, that's all. It's not a way to run a senior center. We all know that. But it's the only thing that I can pull off. It's not in the regular budget. It's a, you know, revolving account patch. That's all. So, thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you, and thank all your members.
Correct me.
Yes. The next item on the Town Administrator's Update is that we did complete our open space recreation plan, even though that's the next item on the agenda. I just put in the letter with a sticky note that came from the program director, who basically said, wanted to offer congratulations on our town's very first open space recreation plan, and said we should all be very proud. That's from Melissa Cryin. We had a couple of little punch list things out of our 250-page document that we sent in that we have to, that we already have answered. But I wanted to put that in the packet, because one of the conditions of an open space recreation plan grant that we had received the previous year was that we had to actually apply for either a conservation grant or a park grant. As you know, last year, I submitted the park grant. It's the only grant so far that I've applied for that we did not get. And we didn't get it because our open space recreation plan wasn't quite far enough along in terms of specifying its goals and objectives. So we've resubmitted, and what we did, even though I had met with the Centennial Commemoration Committee, which is now formerly the Centennial Anniversary Committee, we talked about trying to make improvements to both the Veterans Park, as well as, in the future, a potential for the property that's on the other side of the fire station. Looking at both these properties and having talked to a number of people, including the trustees, park committee, we, I did a lot of outreach and had even Melissa Cryin come and look at both places. And the goal is to make a comprehensive renovation of the park down the street, and also to hopefully beautify, and maybe the town being able to eventually create a park on the corner. Everywhere I went, including from Pam Dean, who was on that committee, everybody, you know, wants to improve our Veterans Park, to make it even more friendly for all kinds of events. I kept hearing everybody would love to have a gazebo. We had a punch list of electricity. We'd like a more walking path. The benches are atrocious. There's a lot of things that we would like to do to help that park. So the grant I submitted this year is Phase One, although I've already submitted Phase One and Two, in hopes that the next application will include, you know, the property aside from the fire station. But I thought it was important that if the town can get this grant money, and it's a $75,000 complete spruce-up, from everything, from beautiful park benches, to ornamental lighting, to a very beautiful double-tiered gazebo that would allow functions to take place and anchor the place. Again, all of this will, you know, continue to be refined through design, but the initial grant application and using, you know, some of the funds that we already had for the commemoration aspect of the centennial, I kept hearing over and over again that, you know, we have a park, but we have a park that's in need of a facelift. And a facelift costs a lot. So we would get 68% reimbursement, and so we have a small fraction to cover, and the money is there if the community does get this funding going forward. So I put in your packets of just the salient points of the application, which I filed last week, and, including the schematics, and, and a very beautiful rendition, which has been costed out. So it doesn't look quite like this. We hope to have, you know, stone wall and fireplace, flower beds around it, but it's, I think it's going to be a good project that the town wouldn't be able to do on its own, but with the assistance of the state. After having filed the form of grant, I think we have a good shot at it.
And so, the remainder of the funds necessary to complete the project would come from the Centennial Committee?
Yes. Yeah, I put down...
Centennial Commemoration Committee did way back talk about use of that money for improvements, whether it be a future park. We also discussed, Les Davis went out and did electricity. There was talk of the gazebo, you know, talks of getting with the Veterans Park and, you know, collaborating with them. So that's one of the reasons why the Centennial Committee, once was dissolved, and the Centennial Commemoration Committee, because there are funds left in that account that we can use towards future things. That will be a vote of, the committee will have to come together and vote on that when needed.
I have to say, I drove by Sunday, and there were kids playing football there, and it was nice to see. So if we could use more of the park more often, that would be...
Right. And open space recreation had also looked at this as, you know, something that needed some improvements, so that it would be used even more, and make it, you know, conducive for all seasons, even inclement weather. You know, there's no place to really go and host something, but if you build a really nice, you know, whether it's a 22 by 22, or 24 by 24, you know, something where you can host concerts, where you can actually have events underneath, even if it's not going to be great weather. You know, you can do a lot of...
Even when it's sweet, nice, you do a lamp later, kids still...
Well, the girls deserve...
...sing along.
Yeah, exactly. They deserve a place to, you know, feed from. But I listened to that. You know, it was, it wasn't structured back then, but it's become more structured. TEC Engineering did a great job in doing some in-kind renditions for us, and also helping me solidify the budget, although, you know, it required going through a lot of different channels to figure out what we might be able to do. So that has been submitted as well.
I think this is a component of new growth for the town. If you get a decent center...
I think it's important. You know, we know what we're faced with for an operational budget, but this isn't the operational budget. This is about capital that we do not have, and that we've been spending one-time capital reserves to balance an operational budget. So, you know, in all honesty, it's not easy to put together some of these applications and go forward, but I think it's important to continue to move the town forward, especially with some of its capital needs, and this is one of them. And you don't complete an open space recreation plan and then say, yeah, well, we're not going to, you know, honor the rest of the requirements, which was to submit some kind of application. They don't want the plan to sit on a shelf and do nothing. So we'll keep our fingers crossed, and hopefully, we can move forward with that.
What is the remaining centennial?
Yeah, it's about 22, something like that, 22,000, which is about the amount that we scaled the project to, so to be able to match, yeah. So it would, would be covered there. And that's about one of the only places where you get, you know, a match for. So the next on the agenda is the DHCD Housing Choice Small Town Capital Grant Program. I brought this up because in mid-July, I, the announcement came from the governor's office, that they were actually opening up, under the Housing Choice Initiative, a brand-new program. It is, it is election year, so there's a lot of new programs that come out. So if, they might not be there next year. So I looked at this, this very tight timeframe, you know, I got this, not even July 13th, I got it after that. So by August 17th, I'd been already toying with an idea of putting together a capital grant versus a housing grant for us. And they're allowing small communities under 7,000 to be able to use some housing and community development money for some kind of capital item. So I'm going to be meeting with our chairman. I've got some ideas about what we might be able to submit for. We have some ongoing, upcoming capital items that might be significant, and, you know, the maximum award can be upwards of 100,000. And so I'm going to be looking at doing that and applying for that before August 17th. And hopefully, maybe we can get some more funding in the town for, again, those capital needs that we really, you know, no longer have the money to support in one way or another.
And we meet the requirement that we already have a community compact grant.
Yes.
And that is part of it.
Yes.
It is. And the final item on the agenda, and I know that you're all aware, that unexpectedly, in some ways, and in a very fast trajectory, recently, I have had an offer for employment in another town. And I just want to be able to tell this board unequivocally that, at this point in time, it's still an offer. I do not have, I'm going through the process, and I will be working closely with this board as I continue under my current employment agreement. And I think I've made it quite clear to everybody that this is a transition. I know some people have me exiting on September 1st. That's not true. One, that's not professional, and two, they're not me. So there's been a lot of speculation, and I just want the board to know that as we go forward, we'll have that dialogue, and as soon as I have, you know, more confirmation of how we can transition, and of course, we have some decisions to make about that, I appreciate your patience and understanding in that. And that would conclude my administrative update.
Thank you. Board truly appreciates all your effort and what you've done, and what you continue to do.
I appreciate that. I'm sure we'll have some more time to talk about this. I would hope we do. And so, but for tonight, I just wanted to quell the rumor mill that I'm not out the door, yet. All right? So, and I think you can tell by the workload that I'm, you know, continuing to do is to make sure that the town continues to operate smoothly. And we have such great staff here that I'm very confident that a lot of the work that we're doing currently will continue.
Before we go into signatures...
Oh, yes.
Before we do that, I just want to make one announcement, and I'll let you make it for our next office hour.
Did we agree on a time?
You said it.
Were we going on the 11th or the 25th?
Saturday.
The 11th?
Yeah.
Okay. So Mr. Repose and I, since the, we override vote, and made ourselves available at the library for multiple hours, and met with numerous people. Our first Saturday was very successful in having a conversation and dialogue with individuals. Our last one fell on the same night as the Fincoms first meeting, but we had made our plans, and we stuck to it. Going ahead, we're going to keep our Saturday morning office hours as our one office hours, with the school year starting and commitments on my side, starting up again with the three children Girl Scouts meetings and such, and work, and Joe's schedule. So our next office hour will be Saturday, August 11th, and we'll hold that from 8:30 till 10:30 here at the town hall, for any resident who wants to come in and talk. Last time, I brought two coffees, so come early if you want a coffee.
If you have, you know, questions regarding the budget, where we stand, or plans going forward, how did we get here, you know, we'd be happy to, you know, go over that with you.
Yep. Can't say that you don't have an opportunity to ask a question. That was actually very calming and peaceful to meet with Joe. Right, Joe? Are meetings...
Sometimes.
Andrew, there's one of them that you're not on, but your name is, so just ignore your signature. It's coming up.
Do we have to sign one of the other things, too? Or something?
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
KP.
KP Law.
KP and election.
Yes. Oh, my God. Thank you. Sorry, I got a little sidetracked. Those are the KP Law ones. And, yes, sign away, there's seven. KP warrant. Yep. She likes originals for all of them.
Don't just sign the top one and pass it along.
Right, then have it once before.
Mr. Thewat will be knocking on your door for additional signatures.
It's at this point that Tim should have some background music playing.
Oh, my goodness.
I know. That's Diane.
I need a stamp.
I know, I know, Diane. But I understand why. It's not really my name. It's my husband's name. This is the app and spell one, it should be S.
They just had a recent meeting, so I'll have to see, because I was at the end.
But if it's not, it's just for the future.
I understand. That's good. No problem.
No, I had, I just tested before I started signing.
Did the Coleman and Page one come back? Did I sign one of them?
I think they might have just, I don't think it started with you. I think there's two there that...
The Coleman and Page ones?
Tommy needs the Coleman and Page ones.
You coming on downtown? You want to look through to see what you need to sign?
Yeah, I think it's the first two.
Mm-hmm. That should be on, you know, it'll be right underneath. Same, the town of Sutton gets one, we get one.
17?
I know, my daughter texts me. When you coming home?
She's not so young.
No, that's Madison. That's, um...
No, I came in with the helper. It's not my daughter.
Oh, I wasn't looking.
All righty. We're all signed. Our next regular scheduled meeting Monday, August 20th, 2018. Entertaining motion to adjourn.
Aye. Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Be here a second.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.